Yeah. Um, nine. Well, have a good weekend, you.
Yeah.
Oh, I think my seat is fine.
Yeah, that's why I'm running up at noon time. Me.
You know.
Yeah.
Well, I love you down.
It's not like I'm running home yet.
Well, yeah, but it's nice to get home and.
Oh, that's so. Oh. I guess I'll be talking on. And I, it is time to go back. They're comfy. I'm like, I gotta go back. I have to come back here. Yeah. You don't tell me. Yeah.
Oh, that's so fun, though.
Yeah.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, Niki.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Yeah, I'm good. So this is a new experience for me to host. Usually you're doing it, right?
You know what? There is no usual anymore. Anything. No, I think it's great if you're hosting. You can you see everyone?
I'm sorry?
Can you see everyone on your screen when that happens or?
Well, it kind of tops out at about 12 people, but I can see the list of names.
Okay.
Yeah, visitors and stuff.
Do you mind hosting?
Oh, no, but you know what? I should put you on as co-host.
Okay.
Because what's happened sometimes is sometimes my computer just cuts out.
Okay, sure. Put me on as co-host.
Yeah, that way we're covered.
Good.
That you'll keep going even if I did something.
That's perfect.
That'd be great. I did have one question on the executive session. I think I'm supposed to be in it because of the negotiations. I, did you receive an email? Showing how to get in or does Jen just do that when you're in there?
I believe Jen Malcolm Brown is going to be doing the hosting of the executive session.
We don't have it because with negotiations Pamela sends out the link ahead of time. So I didn't know how it worked, but sounds good. I'm sure Jen's in control.
Yes. And we'll figure it out as we go along. If there's a problem, we'll, we'll make do or whatever. It's all we can do now.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Hey, Jackie. Hey, Bruce.
We have double meetings going on in my house, so there's a lot of talking going on.
Nice background, though, Jackie.
What?
Nice background. Looks like you're at school.
I love it. I haven't seen you there in so long. Trying to remember. No, I think I, I talked to you, but I didn't. See you there. Hey, Jen.
Good day.
Jen, are you prepared to do the executive session stuff there? The.
Like to move us over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me. I'm pretty sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you for doing that.
Yep.
And.
Yeah.
Becky will be with us for that as well.
Good.
I hope it's not past midnight.
I agree.
Nope.
Good job.
We're gonna move through.
Our meetings are pretty, for the most part, pretty good.
Yeah. We try hard.
I love it.
Get a water refill.
I love it when Trevor comes on from outer space.
Wow.
Especially with all the Mars landings and, you know, information coming out with Mars.
Maybe that'll be my background in next meeting. We'll have to see.
Well, Trevor, you're out of this world anyhow.
Oh, thanks.
I second that.
I feel the same way about you guys.
Oh, thank you.
On the final, go ahead.
I was gonna say hello, Katie. Hello, Debbie Lee. Hello, Lauren. All right, so. We have a quorum. And. It is 7:01. So Trevor, we're gonna open the meeting at 7:01. Thank you all for coming. Becky Torres and I are co-hosting. The Zoom setup was through Becky and in case her computer goes out, I'll be a backup to keep things moving forward. So thank you all for coming and the first item on the agenda is public hearings. And I think the first part of the public hearing, I'd like to devote to the budget. So this is an opportunity for school committee members to hear if there's any. Any thoughts about FY22 budget? I do want to sort of mention to the school committee members that I did recently have some correspondence with Becky. So. We'll talk about that a little later, but at this point it's an opportunity for us to listen. And then I will move forward with the agenda. And we will then come to agenda item F, which is discussion on the budget. So we can have further discussion then. Right now is our opportunity to listen. So any comments about FY22 budget during the budget hearing? Yes, Becky.
Hi, everyone. I'm coming. Sort of speaking for the finance committee or with the finance committee. As we have proceeded through our budget, you all are aware that last year our tax rate was at 2405. It was quite high. And with the application of $220,000, we were able to back off that number by about a dollar. And then we had some other, other cuts, some other savings with the regional assessment. And so that current budget is 2264. When we look at our current budget. Balancing using, using the full Chute's very elementary school budget. We come and other things, we're building the $220,000 back into the budget. And when all that is tabulated, the first rough draft shows about a $23.85. Tax rate just under $24 per thousand. $25 is the limit. And so being mindful of that, I, I had during the last couple of months, I was checking in with Bruce. Seeing how, you know, if there potentially might have been any changes in your grant picture or your fiscal picture that might help loosen up any, any more reductions to your request. And so he advised that. That I ask you guys about it and so that if you could look through and see if more grant money came in than you anticipated or think, you know, things of that sort that wouldn't harm your programming and your educational needs. So we're just because of the sensitivity to the 25, if there is a potential for reduction, maybe up to 20,000 or so. It would be helpful to the overall picture and this is the time to ask, we don't want to be, you know, you're reviewing your budget now. So. I spoke with the finance committee last night. And they, they were supportive of asking that question. So that's why I'm here tonight. Suzie Mosher, who's on the finance committee is also here. She might have more comments for you, but I just wanted that to be hopefully part of your conversation with the administration tonight.
Suzie, do you have any comments?
Want to say that I feel like the school committee and the town select board have been working well together. And so it's based on mutual respect and trust. And recognizing the mission that each part has and the mission for Schutze Berry as a whole. And sustaining a good education program is, is really important. So this look over the budget that was drafted back in October. Is respectful of what programs you want to continue and just looking to see if any of this. Incredibly dynamic situation we all live in where things change. And, you know, stuff is passed and stuff is not passed and blah, blah, blah. I'm hoping we could look and see if there's any changes that would benefit us all.
Thank you. Is there any other public that would like to comment on the budget? And Becky, this is where I'm gonna lean to you. Do you see any hands up or any, any other people on the?
I do not. I do not see any hands up.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your input. This is always the opportunity to hear from the public and we'll talk about things a little bit further down in the agenda. While we're on public hearings, are there any other public hearings? Yes, Becky.
Dan, I just want to clarify, one of my conversation, I had a second part of my conversation with Dan was to bring another request to the school committee regarding the design for the gym roof. I've gotten, I've got, we went out to bid with the help of Furcog. We have, I enlisted the support of Jeff Quackenbush and Michael Broad, who helped review the six proposals that came in. In response to the bid, we got three excellent. Architects that we worked through analyzing and scoring. And then we chose one of them Habib architects. And. I have Bruce Turner was also with us in the final meeting. The way this process works in an RFQ, you go out to your first choice and you negotiate with that party. And if you fail to, to reach a satisfactory conclusion, you go on to the second or possibly the third. So in this case, we went to the first, the negotiations. They came back with a very solid scope of work and timeline and a price that, that we found very acceptable. It's currently $28,700. And again, I'm coming with a question, just in case there is the possibility, given the year you're having. Whether the school could consider or would be able to consider payment of that 28,700. There are some other pieces going that will be in addition to that for the hazard mitigation and the, and the roofer, which I will pick up with not, we won't be adding those costs. The town, if there's any additional design costs, it would be handled through the town.
Thank you, Becky. Any other comments, public hearings? All right, I have two quick things. One, I think all the school committee members recognize that I did submit the annual report for the school committee. So that's been submitted. The other thing is, I believe it was Tuesday and all the days went into one. Massachusetts Association of School Committees had a conference on inclusion, diversity and equity. The presenter was Dr. Khaleesi Warnum. So I attended the workshop. I just want to say it was phenomenal. I was hoping that it would be recorded, but I don't believe it was recorded. But I'll forward her name. It does look like she has a really good background and a list of accomplishments. But I thought it was, it was an evening workshop. She was really engaging, exciting and fun and talkative and kept everybody's attention. But really came through with information in a way that I felt was a win-win. Where you felt really good about. Issues regarding. How we can move forward and. Be self-reflective on implicit bias and, and things of that nature. So anyhow, I just wanted to mention it. I thought it was a really good program sponsored by Massachusetts Association of School Committees. All right. Review of the agenda and perpetual calendar. All right, so I glanced through the infamous perpetual calendar. It's probably a little bit off this year, so I'm gonna sort of look at both February and March. I think it's a school committee election time, so be aware of looking into nomination papers and such. Tonight is the budget hearing. And the final budget vote is usually in March, but I think the way the calendar fell, we're doing it early. Anyhow, I think that's about it. Next is warrants and gifts. Steve Sullivan generally gathers those and looks them over and all of that. I believe Trevor probably already has them.
I can read them like them.
You've got them, Bruce?
Yeah, I have them. I sent them to Trevor already, but I can read them.
Trevor has a thumbs up. Trevor has a thumbs up.
Yeah, if you want to read through them, that'd be great, Bruce.
Sure. We have three payroll warrants. Actually, the third one's not until next week, but anyway. Number 316, it was the 8th of February. For $68,482.69. Number 317 dated the 22nd of February for $69,375.69. And upcoming warrant dated or number 318 dated the 8th of March. For $70,775.78. And we have two vendor warrants. Number 3019 dated the 8th of February for $19,536.18. And number 3020 dated the 18th of February for $5,523.78. So that's it.
And Trevor, those numbers all seem to line up with what you have.
Yep, those are the numbers that Bruce sent me.
Excellent. So do we have a motion to accept the warrants into the record?
I move to accept the warrants into the record.
All right, and Katie?
I can second.
All right, and all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Great. Passes unanimously. Any gifts, Jackie, that you're aware of?
Wow, wow.
All right.
I do that just for Jen and I do it for Trevor because he actually writes it.
You know, it makes my night.
All right, next we need an approval of minutes from January 21st.
I moved to approve the minutes of January 21st.
All right, and were there any edits or changes? Seeing none. Was there a second? Jen seconded. Okay, perfect. All in favor? Katie, are you voting in favor? Okay, yeah, so passes unanimously. Thank you. So unfinished business. Because we had a very busy night tonight and I don't want to steal Bruce's thunder, but I'm gonna try to go over sort of a game plan here. As Becky mentioned, she was in contact with me about some of the requests. Coming from, I believe, her and the finance committee. Thoughts about the budget. So I did contact. The administration, Jackie, Jennifer and Bruce. So that we could have at least some thoughts to come forward. And really what was important was to find out sort of where we are this year and then sort of where, what we can expect for next year. So. I guess I wanted to say a few things, first of all. And Suzie, I think you really sort of captured some of what I was going to say. I think we have a really good marriage here in town between. I'm gonna say most, if not all departments. We really appreciate working with each department in a cooperative collaborative fashion. I wanted to mention a few things. I think it's important for the finance committee to recognize that at Chute's very elementary school, we operate on a zero-based budget process. So we look at the budget each year sort of independently to see what do we need at our school based upon conditions, whatever those might be. With the current situation with COVID, that could be that we may need an additional person to support the needs of students, students that are gonna come back who may be. Behind. So we don't operate our budget by just looking at last year's and adding a percentage for what we would think we're gonna do next year. So I think you all recognize that. I also wanted to mention, you know, I think I had Bruce sort of look back over the last few years, sort of what happens. To access or how we operate our budget, because I think it's, I think it's amazing. I think it's amazing that we can focus on what our school needs operationally. And then when something arises that the town is willing to help support, whatever those needs are, things that we really can't foresee. Many school systems districts operate in a town or city fashion. Where they're responsible for everything under their purview and they're responsible. To support that financially. So those entities often, I'm gonna say probably always, need to budget in a way that they're able to support anything that comes up. So they need to be prepared for if there's a problem with the heating system, if there's a problem with the roof, or there's a problem with anything else. What happens in situations like that is when they have that budget and things, the roof doesn't need a repair or the heating system continues to operate. There's a way where people generally try to use up that budget to ask for the same amount next year because whatever may not have happened this year could happen next year. And if you're responsible for paying for it. You need to have the money in your budget. We don't operate like that and I think it works in everybody's best interest. I think it's efficient. So in 2017. The school committee, really the school, because they're the ones that execute the budget. We returned about just over $48,000 to the town, money that wasn't spent. 2018. Sort of reversed, we needed some money from the town of about $40,000. And the following year, the same thing, we needed about $20,000. These are for items of, you know, capital, capital items. And in 2020, we returned about $18,000. And then we also had within our budget, the ability to pay for a water heater, which is about $12,000. So what I'm really trying to say is it's one big pool of money for the town of Chute's Berry. It's really how do you spend it efficiently and effectively? And I think the system we have right now is great. With this meeting and of course with some of the requests that we had. Bruce. As you know, in our. In our. The stuff we get from Pam, we had the financial reports showing what expenditures we've had to date. But this gave Bruce an opportunity to sort of really look and see, you know, where are we within the budget? And there is money that we haven't spent yet and we don't anticipate spending. And it's because of the situation we're in with COVID. So some things in the budget like the, you know. Substitute teachers. There's some summer school stuff. There's money that sort of was put into the budget expecting or not knowing what we were gonna negotiate for a COLA last year. All those kinds of things. So ultimately what. Bruce. Found is that it looks like we would be giving more money back to the town this year than we normally do. So certainly knowing that and sort of the amount of money that is in the budget. That we don't anticipate spending for the reasons I just mentioned. We believe that our budget could support. Paying the $28,700 for. I guess it would gain for, for gauging what needs to be done with the school roof. So Becky, we think we can afford to pay that out of our school budget. In addition to that. I believe the, the shed. Needs a roof replaced. We believe we can pay that $4,000 out of the school budget. There's also the sliders to the courtyard. And that we believe we can pay out of our budget. And I think that was what $28,000, Bruce?
Yeah, in cooperation with some of the money that the town's appropriated.
Right. I believe the town has given us about $7,000. So we think we can pay that out of our school budget. And in addition to that. I think Jackie, and of course, working along with Jennifer and Bruce, you know, also felt that during these COVID times, it's also important to continue looking at ways of. Educating our students and one of the other items that we think, we believe we can pay for out of the budget is providing wifi outdoors of the school. And that is $8,000.
Yeah, Debbie's gonna talk a little more about that during my time.
Okay, so. I guess. Given all of that. We believe we will still have some excess money to return to the town. How much? It's hard to say at this point. There's still shifting sands and all of that. But we think that those items, we feel comfortable to be able to pay out of the budget. So the savings again came from things that I mentioned like substitute salaries, aid salaries. I think we rehired the psychologist. That salary was a little bit lower than what we had been paying. There was some savings in fuel, circuit breaker money and such. So I guess my question first of all will be to Suzie and Becky, does that seem to fit some of the needs that you see that the town has? I see a big smile with Becky.
I think this is wonderful. If the school's able to take the first step in the design and then we'll get bid in and take it forward to annual town meeting, hopefully as scheduled. The design work is primarily, our hope is to do the gym roof and, and do the, some engineering for the for the main part of the roof, but it's mostly the gym roof as our first priority. And then we'll move on from there. We're still going to try to go for an MSB loan, MSBA loan. And who knows, fourth try might, might do it. But we can't wait on the whole project and they haven't even begun to do any applications to the MSBA, which are usually complete by this time of the year. So we don't know what's going on with that program, so relying on it is not realistic today. So this is a wonderful first step and I, you know, speaking for the whole town, I think it, everyone knows it's a top priority and we really appreciate your being able to support this big first step. Thank you.
So as I started this whole conversation, it was really about the town as a whole and looking at the numbers as a whole. I also think that things are changing and shifting. So I think my next question to both Suzie and Becky are given what we anticipate having access to pay for all of those items, how do you feel about FY twenty two budget?
I'm sure Suzie will say a word next, but from my perspective, they're very, they're separate in my mind. That's, it's a wonderful, you know, the, the building project is critical and very important. I think it, it has no relationship to the tax rate, the operating budget going forward next year does. And so it, I like Suzie underscored, it's, it's dependent on, you know, what you, you all are feeling is, is the responsible thing to recommend. If, if there have been, been changes in, in the past four months, or if there's, you know, extreme uncertainty, which I know there is on how, how the school's going to operate next year. I understand if you, if there's no savings there, but it would be very, you know, like I said, I, I see them as two very separate issues. The finance committee discussed the, the question about whether the budget could come down or not at all without any knowledge of the, of the roof. So that's, that's the way I'm looking at. They're separate issues, but it's dependent on your, your guys' recommendations. You're in the, you know, you know what, what the uncertainties are better than anyone else.
And I believe we're going to talk a little bit later about some of those uncertainties. And I think Jackie, Jennifer, and Bruce have some, a plan on some of those. But I think I'd like to turn over to Jackie to see what you're thinking about that FY twenty two budget and any reductions that you think that may be feasible.
Yeah, so Bruce and Jen and I did examine the budget and you know, I just want to say that every year we try to be super mindful and we are very well aware of the tax bracket. Very well aware, and I think when you look at our budget, there's not much to cut. We don't have a lot of fluff going on in the budget. But, you know, in terms of some of the stuff I know about in the revolving accounts and some of the grants that we have, Bruce and I were able to kind of go in and chip a little bit away and the most we could possibly find, you know, and trying to work with the town a little bit, the most we could possibly find that would not impact teaching and learning at the school is eight thousand dollars. Tops. And it, it's from a variety of lines, but that's really the, what we can get. And that is scraping what's already pretty bare. And my main priority is to protect the teaching and learning at the school. And those would be protected even with that. And I, and Dan, is this a, is this a good time to talk about a little bit around? I know that school choice is a big bomb. It's like a big, it's a big thing in the town people want to kind of hear about. Is this a good time to, to talk about that a little bit or no?
Yeah, I, I think it's sort of a segue, but I think it's a, it's an appropriate time to talk about some of the thoughts that you have and how you're going to utilize that in these uncertain times.
Great, thanks. Um, so you know, when we started our discussions around school choice, you know, it was really, we were all like tiptoeing when we first started. We kind of put our toe in the water. We were all a little bit nervous about it. We weren't really sure what was going to happen with it. We had some moral things about it. You know, there were a lot of things around school choice that we worried about. And so we started pretty slowly, taking a small amount of students and kind of working our way up. And then we had the agreement with the teachers' union around teachers' kids being school choice, which also then brought more. So before we knew it, we had a decent amount of money in the school choice pot, you know, and, and we hadn't thought hugely around how we were going to use that to support the school, because we, we were still in the process of like learning it and figuring it out. But I think you've also heard me communicate over the years, probably at least for the past five years, the issues we're having around preschool becoming and being a self-sustained program. And as the demographics in the town have shifted, which I've also communicated greatly, even within our, just our free reduced lunch numbers, which is almost at fifty percent. It, it is very apparent that our, our preschool program is not self-sustaining. And that we need to support it to be able for it to be a, a really vital piece to our community. And I'll say on, on my perspective, I know on Jen's perspective and on Bruce's perspective, it is, it is an absolute must to have for our community, for the health of the community, but for the health of our school. And so looking forward to that, knowing that we're not taking in enough money through the tuition to support our program. I would, I would hope to try to use some of our school choice money to be able to ensure that we had a dynamic, healthy and sustained preschool program. And that will benefit everyone in the town. And then on top of that, we, you know, this year has highlighted it, but we are in the age where we are going to have to be updating technology on a pretty regular basis to be able to continue to uphold the standards that we want for our students. And so that this pot of money could also be super helpful in that piece. Because if you really look at our budget, our tech lines, it's, it's really not much. And for us to be able to continue to be a really dynamic school, that's something that we're going to need to look at. And then finally, you know, Dan touched on this a little bit earlier. We, you know, in the education world, we know that we're going to be up against, like, people say this word all the time and it gets kind of annoying. But unprecedented challenges with our students next year in terms of the amount of support they're going to need to be able to kind of bump back up our social and emotional and academic pieces with our students. And I didn't, I knew it wasn't going to go over too well if I asked for another teacher to be able to do that work, because as of right now, I don't have enough people to be able to do some of the interventions that are going to need to happen so that we have first and second graders who can read before they get to third grade. You know, they've been learning to read on a computer for a lot of the time. Now we're getting in person, but I, but you know what I mean. So I think for next year, if that is something that we need to do, that, that's another position. This one-year position, that's not going to affect our teaching and learning for decades, because we have to cut something. But for an additional support for a one-year piece, I, we would feel comfortable being able to use our, our school choice money to support that type of support to the school. So those are some of the ideas that, that we're thinking about. Jen, did you want to?
Yeah, Jackie, I think you underscored, and I know the school committee will, will echo. You talked about a one-year position and I certainly am committed to using school choice money for those things that we discussed. But we also know what happens when we look around to other neighboring towns, when we rely on the school choice budget as part of our operating budget. And so something like a social, emotional slash academic recovery teacher for one year would be something that wouldn't be in our operating budget year after year. So I just think it's important when we have a school choice funds discussion that we think about those one-time only kinds of purchases, budget items.
Definitely. So that's it. So we got eight thousand dollars for you that we could possibly cut from the budget. And people want to know about our school choice. That's what we're thinking around for the school choice money.
Suzie?
I'm always struck with the parallel universe of how the FinCom is working with the same variables, uncertainty, conservatism. A budget that can work, has all the pieces so it can work and how the school committee is doing the same thing. And since we're on, we're doing that in the same way, I mean, we can appreciate you are doing it and you can appreciate the finance committee and the town doing it. We do have, because we're the finance committee, we do have members from town come and tell us what their opinions are. But our mission is to do pretty much the same. We're trying to make a functional town budget. And you're trying to make a functional school, including the budget. So I like that we are both on the same page and we are dealing with uncertainty too. And the grants from COVID relief and all that make us still have to do upfront for some things, because we don't quite know where it's all going to land. And we're there for that. And then when it does pan out that some money comes through and that gets used, then it returns to the coffers if those grants come through. Overall, the whole thing about Prop two and a half is it's our political. I was going to say burden, I'm not sure the right word. That's what we have to do. We have to stick with that. And politically, state can make other choices and the feds can make other choices, but that's the one we get to choose. So we're doing that and it limits us. But I think more than any other year, and maybe because of this year, I do definitely see the state and local tax and politics are part of how we survive too. We haven't been getting great state aid. We've had cuts in chapter seventy. But this year, between support to citizens through payroll, through Payroll Protection Act and CARES Act and unemployment and direct payments to people. The community is being served by those other levels of government in a way that we haven't had recently. So I do try to see us as a whole. We're, we're getting support from the bigger world as well as trying to be supportive here. So I, I just feel it's important for us to recognize each other in the mirror. We are dealing with some of the same things. And I, I do understand that you are doing no fluff and neither are we. And we have sort of a little more political field to kick around in or be kicked around in. But I think we're on the same page for being able to represent our needs honestly and then look for as many ways to meet them as we can. So I really appreciate that aspect of how this is all going forward.
And Becky, you had your hand up?
I guess Jackie, I, I, I just wanted to check in about the eight thousand dollars that that if it's not, you know, like what I was hoping to maybe hear was, oh, look, this pot of grant money came in that we didn't expect. Freeing up something. If you're scraping back on spending and particularly, you know, a thousand dollars here and there, like if it's professional services, I don't know where it's coming from. I'm just concerned that if that's where you're at to come up with something that it's, it's making your position tighter than it should be for you to do, you know, to function as a school. And I, you know, that, that wasn't, we're not trying to put you in that position. If you did have movement on grants or something like that, that added to the revenue side and you were able to maintain the budget you've already formulated, that would, you know, that's different. So.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, that, that helps to hear kind of like where your mindset was. What we have, you know, what we have pulled out for right now, we would be able to use some of the grants that we have for next year to be able to cover some of it. However, I, I do want to say, this is stuff, this is money that we were, we're going to want to build back into the budget. And the, like, it won't, these aren't cuts that I want to be able to have forever, and I'm not going to have the grant money that I have right now forever. Right. So, you know, they are, I just want to have that on record that, you know, we are able to do this. I mean, for next year, this eight thousand dollars, because I know what else I have, but what else I have is not going to, is not going to always be there. And so then we're going to want to put it back in next year. And so then it's going to be, you know, back in there. So I don't know what the, what the committee thinks about that.
Yeah, I think the only, and again, Suzie's representing the finance committee, but I, I guess I do think that it's doable, Becky. But my concern would be when we come to next year and suddenly we're adding those back in and our budget instead of being a one point five eight percent increase is now a two point three or whatever, that there's not this, you know, exasperation that, oh my God, why is our budget going up so high? It would be to really, you know, replace something that we are taking out at this point. So as long as, you know, the finance committee is clear on that, I think that the, the monies that we're taking out, we can, we can work around that for one year. So we are willing to reduce. The, the administration is recommending these reductions to help support the situation that the town is in. And we can mention those line items, I'll mention those line items now, so that the school committee hears it, so that they know whether or not these are cuts for this year that they think we could live without. And again, we all know the way the school budget works is, you know, we have the big pot of money and we can kind of move things around. So if there's an expense in an area that we're not expecting and we were going to take, you know, a thousand dollars from one area to put it into that area, we can do that. But if the, if we cut fifteen hundred dollars out of the school committee line, maybe that means that we, we can't do that. We don't have that money there. And I do look at that school committee line as an important one, because, you know, that pays for our conference every year at Cape Cod. There have been times where, you know, being a part of that conference is important. You meet other people from different parts of the state. You hear what's going on. You connect with people in ways that I think is important. I know myself, I've been a presenter at times, so or, or a person who has nominated someone for an award. So I kind of feel like it is important. So, you know, it, it may come out of the school committee line, but I do feel like that's an important line. And not going to the conference, I mean, to me is not an option. I'll, I'll probably pay for it myself if I have to, because I do think it's that important. That's our professional development. That's where we That's our professional development. That's where we, uh, and, and that's just one line item. So I'll stop there. Yes, Becky.
So I, I, I think Suzie and I are both saying that while we're all facing limits, I, I mean, if depending on what happens with valuations next year, I mean, we're in this limited, um, $25 game right now. Uh, the, the reports I'm getting to build the budget from the state have, um, are different than we've ever seen before. Um, they're not, we don't know if they're gonna allow for any new growth. Um, we're, we've had, you know, we have currently over $500,000 of unused levy capacity and and we can't use it because it goes over $25 per thousand. Um, so the, the way this can change in the future is for the values to grow in the town. Um, they, the estimated values, um, by the state in the last, uh, last year's report came up $20 million higher than they currently are, uh, which would give about $2 of relief. Um, so we anticipate we might have that to help keep us inching along for another couple of years. But that's, what I'm trying to explain is while this year we have flexibility and we're talking about it would be nice if you could do this, we're gonna be, if we do hit that $25, there won't be any more flexibility. Um, and our only option would be to use, um, free cash depending, you know, that would become the only way to expand any operational costs in the budget. Um, so it's, it, you know, it's, we're gonna be, we potentially could be in a pickle. Um, but the game could change with increased values. But they're not gonna continue to increase every year for, um, for, who knows for how long. So I just wanted you guys to understand the context as you look forward to the next couple of years that, um, I think it's really good to have this conversation now when we don't have the gun to our head. Um, and, and to really help it, uh, encourage our thinking. I, I a hundred percent, uh, appreciate your thinking on choice money. It's like free cash for the town. You start using it to build your budget and you're dead in, in, in a couple of years. Uh, there's stories of many towns going bankrupt, um, by that practice. So I, I a hundred percent support your position on that.
So if I can say one thing, and then I'll ask a question to you both again. Uh, the other piece, and I, I think for, I'll speak for myself as a school committee member. Um, you know, tax valuations and levies and all of that, that, that's a little beyond me. I'm focusing on one piece of this.
Yeah.
So, uh, I just want to mention that, as you know, any money that we have left over, so if that money is in our budget, that $8,000, and it turns out that we, we have a virtual conference as we did last year and we don't spend that money, it will come back to the town.
Right.
So that's my statement. My question is, do you want us to cut that 8,000 out of the budget?
Um, Suzie? I, I'm, I'm leaning towards no.
Right. I'm having, um, um, I'll come back to the town. I think it's important that the school spend the money it needs to. Um, so rather than cut it out of the budget, I think it's important to present it. And then if it comes back as free cash, unused leftover at the end, I think that's good. I also wanted to add one other piece, which is I'm trying to tell departments who have been, um, reminded to do bare bones budget, that penny wise and pound foolish really matters to me. If we don't invest in things we need to invest in, we end up paying more later and we, or, and we suffer in the meantime. I, I find that to be the wrong-headed thing. So, um, I guess it doesn't particularly apply to this issue around going to a conference or not, but it does apply to some other things. So rather than cut out something that then has to be fixed later and is more costly and everybody suffered in the meantime, that is not my philosophy. That is not a FinCom decision and I'm a new person on board and I will be saying that more. Um, and we will have a discussion, but I feel in terms of making cuts, do my suggestion is not penny wise and pound foolish. And if this budget comes to us with that 8,000 in and, and that doesn't get spent, or you find something else you need to spend it on, um, that's good. And if it comes back as free cash, I think that's okay too.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Lauren?
Just wanted to say that, um, my opinion is also that it's harder for us to, um, put back money that we, you know, just in terms of, um, everything, in terms of how our budget looks the next time. And so if there are things that we really need moving forward, I think that it makes more sense for us to budget for them. And then if we, if we don't spend it, give it back. But if we have to ask for it again later, then it's, we still need that money and then it's more instead of the same. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Um, the last thing I'll mention, just in regards to, you know, again, the financial situation for this year. Um, I mentioned all of the items that, you know, would, we would be paying out of our budget. The $28,700, uh, the $4,000 for the shed roof, the 21,000 plus whatever the town has contributed towards the sliders. But we believe that there will still be a fairly good amount of money that will come back to the town. So again, I just want to reiterate, being frugal, being good stewards of this, uh, the finances, that money will be coming back to the town. We're not gonna spend it. And I'm hoping that that will help you in some way. Yes. Becky?
Um, Dan, I, I just, I'm aware, and I, I think Bruce is also, that there's another, the heating control systems at the schools are another, um, major concern, uh, that at some point needs to get addressed, uh, sooner than later before another winter comes. And, um, I think we need to work together to figure that one out. Um.
Right. So that's about $128,000. And right now, we think we could contribute towards that, obviously with the money that we were, we're expecting will come back to the town. So, um, you know, if that amount that comes back to the town is 40,000 or 50,000, perhaps that could be then used towards those Johnson control system.
Yeah. And it, and it might be that, um, yeah, depending on timing, that it might not come back to the town, but I, I think we need to work together to solve that problem. Um, whether, whether money flies around in a circle first, I, I, I think we're all on the same page that we wanna, we want to make sure that gets fixed.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, um, to the school committee members, I do want to say that, um, I'm, I'm sorry that I didn't communicate any more to you, but I certainly wanted to avoid a discussion. Uh, I did what I thought was best, which was to try to get administration to give us, uh, guidance and direction and make recommendations. So here we are. Do we have a motion to accept the budget? We can have a motion in a second and then we can go into further discussion as a school committee.
I move to accept the budget.
Again.
All right. So currently the budget stands at a total of, goodness, $2,363,879. It is a 1.57% increase. So I'd like that to be reflected in the minutes. I don't think it necessarily has to be in the motion. Now, as a school committee, I guess I'd like to discuss, uh, we have, uh, the proposed budget that we've been working on. Uh, we also have some flexibility to make a reduction by a, about 8,000, but I think I'm in agreement with you, Lauren, in where I stand on that. How about you, Jen?
Yeah, I have nothing more to add. I'm in agreement also.
Katie?
All good.
Okay. And Lauren, you still feel the same way, of course, right? Okay. Um, you know, there's a part of me that feels like, oh, we should just cut it and make the town happy. But I'll tell you, if there is a conference, I think it's important for us to go. And that's just one item that I keep coming back to. Um, but it is nickeling and dining. Um, and I also really worry about how that's gonna be for next year. I'd rather vote it in, and if we don't spend it, it goes back to the town. Okay. So it sounds like we're all, oh, I'm sorry, Suzie.
And I just wanted to say if, if any grants show up, I don't know how their season is. But if a grant shows up that changes it, we have till June 12th, um, to think about that.
Excellent. Make sure that's in the minutes too there, Trevor, but that's an important piece of information. All right. So if there's no further discussion, uh, all in favor of accepting the motion to accept the budget as is?
I.
I.
Okay. Um, and because this is such an important one, uh, and I know technically we do need to do the roll call vote. I'll ask that we do do a roll call vote for, for the budget, just to reflect that. So haze eye.
Iander eye.
Welcome Brown eye.
Thomas pick when I.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is reopening. Jackie, you want to give us a update where we are?
Yes, I can give you an update where we are now. And then Jen has some information around where we
Where we're going.
Yeah. Um, so in terms of reopening, as of this week, we have all children whose families chose hybrid in the building. And that is about 68% of our student population. So we have about 68% of the kids, um, currently enrolled at school and for the mornings with their teachers. Um, and we have magician teachers who are simultaneously teaching kids at home and in person at the same time with one little exception that, um, will be the same as everybody else in about a week. So, um, so we are doing it and it's been really lovely to see all of the kids, uh, that are coming in person, in person. We have, you know, a very detailed streamlined process, safety process, dismissal, arrival process. We have a lot of things and the students pick up on it within a day. Um, so the third and fourth graders already, already know how it all goes. The families understand how they pull up and how they get out and the, and the notes that they need and the checks that they do and the masks that they have and all of these things. Um, so it's going great. The kids are exhausted. The kids, you know, we're all building up our tolerance again on how to be out in the world for an extended amount of time. How to use your brain differently, how to support your body sitting at a desk for a certain amount of time, you know, like they're exhausted. So we're getting a lot of reports of sleepy children in the afternoon. Um, and we do have live afternoon sessions. I think I've talked to you all about this, that the state has specific learning time requirements, and that means that we do need to have synchronous instruction in the afternoons as well. Um, and so teachers are reporting it being really tricky to kind of keep those hybrid students awake and participating, um, because they're so tired from their morning. Um, but it's overall gone very smoothly. And, um, we do have one little shift that's gonna happen, which is, um, uh, our third grade teacher is taking the leave of absence, uh, for the rest of the school year. And so we have hired the paraprofessional that was in that classroom as the long-term sub, um, Rory Valentine, who the students love, the community knows her. Um, and we'll be replacing her position with a interim paraprofessional to be able to support the students. So that is one shift that has happened. Um, and also, you know, we have a team of people like Miss L and Miss Lee and Polly Wagner that can help support that classroom with, um, curriculum throughout the rest of the school year as well. Um, yeah, I won't, the rest is part of my, um, my principal's report and/or stuff that Jen's gonna share. So, um, that's how we are right now with reopening.
Thank you. All right. Jennifer, where are we going?
Where are we going? So, um, Commissioner Jeff Riley announced Tuesday and then had a meeting with superintendents yesterday that he is moving to return students to school. I'm sure we all heard, uh, President Biden talked about opening the majority of schools in K through eight. And he wanted at the end of his first 100 days to have a significant percentage of the schools in the United States open, and his goal was five days a week. Recently, um, also the CDC released updated guidance for K to 12 schools with focus on safely reopening them for in-person learning. Um, in general, the CDC guidance is consistent with, um, guidance that we have received from DESI since, um, the beginning of the, um, COVID-19 pandemic. And, um, some of the themes I, I think that are worth mentioning from the updated CDC guidance are continuing to, um, have a layered mitigation approach to minimize the risks of COVID-19. And that's masking, physical distancing, hand hygiene, cleaning and, uh, contact tracing in partnership with our local boards of health, which we are all doing. Um, the CDC continues to recommend six feet of, uh, distancing. However, DESI will continue to re, recommend six feet where feasible and a minimum of three feet when every other mitigation measure is in place. The masking, the, the distancing, uh, hand hygiene, cleaning and contact tracing. And this is also supported by the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics and Governor Baker's Medical Advisory Board for COVID-19. Additionally, in-person instruction is particularly encouraged for elementary schools. And, uh, the commissioner said with the extensive mitigation strategies that schools have in place as well as our state health metrics, which are continuing to improve, we need to shift away from remote and hybrid learning models and return to traditional in-person. So at the meeting Monday at the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, Commissioner Riley indicated that in March, when he returns to the board, he is going to request that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education grant him the authority to determine when hybrid and remote models, and this is important, will no longer count for learning hours. And this is part of his broader plan that he'll be releasing in March to return more students to in-person learning this spring. Of course, assuming our, um, metrics continue to improve. So if the governor, if the Board of Education grants the commission of this authority, he's, um, pursuing a phased approach to returning students to the classroom, different from our phased approach. Um, his initial goal is to bring all elementary students back to in-person learning five days a week by April 1st. Uh, parents can still have the option for students to learn remotely, but schools, if he's granted this authority, will no longer have the option for hybrid or remote. And it's key to note that, um, if the recommendation is supported by the board, that our time, hybrid or remote, will not count for student learning time. So that was part of, or most of my superintendent's report, and that's where we're at, um, with the commissioner and the state of education in our Commonwealth.
Okay. So this is a topic for discussion. How do school committee members feel about opening, getting all the students back?
I'd really like to hear more from Jackie and Jen.
I'd really like to hear more from Jackie and Jen about the impact of these. Like, what does it actually mean for our students, the time on learning?
Yeah, what the commissioner has told us, if if this is recommended, it becomes regulation, which is law, right? And we won't make our student learning time ours if we continue in a hybrid or for some schools in Union Twenty Eight, a remote fashion. And so that means all of those hours will not count for learning, and those will have to be made up in summer or Saturdays.
Lauren, and then Jen, Lauren.
I'm wondering, I'm sure you've thought about this, Jackie, but if we are forced in this way to do that, what kinds of, you know, I mean, I'm immediately thinking about about lunches. But have you even thought, how do we begin to deal with the changes that this would require?
Yeah, so we have, you know, we learned, we, it was like a mic drop, right? It was, that announcement was totally like a and we have, because we have been starting to think about it, we talked about it at leadership team today. And it's, 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 it's a lot to manage. And if it, if I had my hope, I would hope we wouldn't do it till after April break because there's a a whole lot to do it, but I don't know if we'll have that choice, like Jen said. Like, we might not have that choice, we might have to do it. But as for lunch, Lauren, you know, all of our gut reaction is that it will be outside. Rain or shine, we'd have to get some tents going. You can't have kids facing each other. So we, we talked about leadership, we talked about picnic style lunches outside. We talked about getting, you know, individual seating spaces and on the blacktop. We've talked about
And lunch would definitely be, yeah, like grab and go.
Grab and go bags.
Be, yeah, would be great, beautiful lunches.
Yeah. We also said, you know, it was really, it was jarring to hear that. But then, when we really, really look at it, there's not that many weeks we're talking about. So like, we can, I'm okay with giving kids a bagged lunch for six weeks, you know? I think like we'll, we can be okay with that. But, and we can be outside, which is great for right now, hopefully at that time. But it's, you know, it's, it's going to be a lot, it's going to be a lot of planning. It is going to be a lot on the teachers, it's going to be a lot trying to to reintroduce these kids and how to be outside of their house for a full day and wear masks for an entire day. They're doing great with the masks now, they're doing, but it's, you know, three hours with a mask break. So there's a lot of pieces, there's a lot of pieces. We also, I told you, there was sixty eight percent of our kids back. But there, there is a lot of indication from families that I would assume that another twenty, at least twenty percent of kids want to come in in the spring. So there's a lot of people who want to make that transition once the weather was nicer and there might have been more vaccinations happening. So I do feel like our numbers are going to climb with the amount of kids coming to school, which is great. But it's another, now there's more cars coming, right? Now there's more people having to figure out how to work our safety plan that we have. So
And we may have more people choosing bus for transportation. And so, you know, there will be some adjustment for that as well. So there's lots of moving pieces, and, you know, we're waiting for guidance from D E C. And what the commissioner is saying is, the vote isn't for two more weeks, and then they're not going to issue any guidance until the board votes. So it's going to have to be like, plan ahead and then hope what we plan sort of meets the guidance.
So I think my comments are, I know it's a lot of work, I know it's going to be challenging. But I think it's absolutely necessary. I also think that, you know, lunch, for example, I I've looked at different models of schools that are open, full-time, part-time, hybrid, remote. All of them are doing things differently. I I looked at several schools in Connecticut where they go to school full days, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. They have luncheon at the school, they have a protocols and systems in place for them to eat lunch in the school. So, you know, my question was, why are your clothes on Wednesdays? And they're like, well, for cleaning. But so everybody's doing things differently. I certainly think that it's, it's obtainable. And truthfully, I really worry, I worry about public schools, I worry about teachers and their positions. I was looking, you know, we all know, having attended the Amherst Regional Assessment model meetings, you know, they're cutting a million dollars out of their budget. They're seeing a ten percent reduction in students, and they're cutting sixteen positions, okay, really more through attrition. I have a friend who's on the board at Hilltown Charter School. They have three hundred kids on a waiting list to get in. I look at many of the private schools in our area that are full with waiting lists. If question two are on the ballot now for people to look at expanding charter schools, I'm guessing that that would pass. I don't know what that means for teachers, but I will say it means less of them because budget cuts. So I see, I'm thanking God that that question is not out there now because we would certainly see a huge shift in public sentiment about supporting the expansion of charter schools at this time. The science has led us or gives us a lot of information on how we can open these schools safely. I've also been in contact with two different supermarket chains. Two thousand people a day, on average, go through a supermarket. Supermarkets are operating with all of these people coming in and out with probably less mitigation efforts than what are happening in schools. And they're working through it, they're surviving, they're doing the contact tracing as small, you know, businesses. So it's going to be challenging, but I really think we need to move forward, not because it's a mandate from the governor, not because it's going to be a law, but because it's really what's best for students and families. And, in my opinion, teachers. That's all I have to say. So I would say, or ask, and and the committee can, I guess, give direction with me as well, but I would say that we're looking for, you know, our administration, you know, Jackie, Jennifer, Bruce, all of you to work together to look at, how do we do this in the most safe way, efficient way? And how do we do it in the best way that we can? Knowing maybe it's coming down the pipe that they're going to force us to do it, but I think really with the intentions of what's best for everybody, in my opinion. So I guess as a committee, are we looking to ask them to see what plans they can put again, put into place that are systematic and methodical to move forward in the direction that it looks like the governor is going to be asking anyhow? Jen?
I mean, I don't, I don't know that we have a choice in asking anything but that, but I just want to say that there have been, Jackie, you mentioned the mic drop, and I think there have been many mic drops throughout this last year. And, you know, you have really risen to all of them as a team. And yeah, I think that there are additional factors that you all have to think about, about how to make this work. I think it's really complicated, and I hear Dan's points, and I also know that that's not the the truth for all people in the school system, both families and teachers and so, and administrators. So just holding that we may not have a choice here, and and I really trust that you all will continue to, you know, manage the mic drops. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I have to, you know, speak to what a wonderful leadership team we do have. And yes, we might all be separate school districts, but we certainly all get ideas and plans with each other. I don't think we'd be anywhere without the other, we certainly hold each other up. And I have a quote that hangs on my little lamp in my makeshift office, and it says, "The ultimate measure of a person is where they stand at times of challenge and controversy." And this team has stood together and stood proudly and done well in lots of challenging and controversial times. So I'm really super honored to work with them.
And I just want to say, I also feel really lucky that we have what we have in our building. I, again, I want to publicly thank the Board of Health one zillion times. They have been so helpful. I also want to help thank Becky for like, she's a constant champion of the school, and I do want to say that publicly. And Suzie, and, and I'm just very grateful because we feel very supported from the town in this. And it's, it's been interesting, and the school itself, the physical building, you know, we have a lot of issues. There's like a roof thing going on, which we all know about, there's like a heating thing going on, but we do have good air quality, and I'm very grateful for that. And we also have enough space, like we can do the six feet of distancing. And it's going to be harder when all the kids are back with the six feet of distancing. But we have enough different configurations of space where we can do that safely. And I also feel grateful for that because I know that's not the case with all of the schools in the union. So, so I just want to say that there are some, there are positives too about what we do have in the community that really supports the school.
Yeah, and yay to Andy and Matt, who keep the school
Oh, gosh.
sparkling clean and disinfected. It's, I don't know where we'd be without them in that school. And a special yay to our sixth grade teacher who did an awesome project this year. Oh, that would all be Jackie, teaching sixth grade. And she texted the leadership team some pictures of her unit that she was doing. And I just said, I thought she was the coolest teacher ever, and she said, no, nerdy. And I said, well, I used to read the dictionary, so in my book, you're super cool. So Jackie's just doing an awesome job.
From a sixth grade parent, I had a potato in my bed yesterday because my son brought home a potato because they mummified potatoes and made french fries. And you can't, between mummies and french fries, you can do no better.
Yeah.
For six grades.
Yeah, it's been fun, it's been fun.
Well, since all these things are going around, I think I'd also like to thank Jennifer, in particular, for being the leader, the leader of Union Twenty Eight, and, you know, you set the tone and the climate in the organization, and you're leading it in a very unbelievable direction. So thank you, and Bruce for his hard work, and everybody. But, you know, Jen, Jennifer, you've got to take a lot of credit there as well. Enough of that, let's move on.
All right, good, because I was going to cry, so let's do, let's keep to business.
All right, so if the committee will allow me, I'd like to move on to the school choice money and down and come to the memorandum of understanding later in the agenda because we're going to want to go into executive session to have a conversation about that. And then we would come back into the open public if we're ready to vote on it. But that'll also give us an opportunity to get through the meeting, through the agenda with Trevor here. And perhaps if we do go into executive session with the intentions of coming out into the open public, maybe Jennifer would be kind enough to take whatever last few things we could before adjournment. So Trevor doesn't have to hang around. Does that sound okay to the committee and everyone? All right, so let's go on to the school choice money, and I think we can probably be brief on this, right, Jackie?
Yes, I mean, I don't have anything else really to say.
Okay.
But this, this goes in with the school choice buddy, which is, we've, we have been getting, I thought Jessica was on here. I was going to ask her exactly, she just, but she's not. We have been getting way more calls than usual about school choice interest. A lot of Amherst people, but a lot of people in general, and I, and our numbers in general for the school. Like, I have, I think we have twenty eligible kindergarteners, which we haven't had that in several years. So our general numbers in the school, I feel like when there's no people choosing homeschool because of a pandemic, I think are going to be a lot higher in general. So I don't know how many slots I'm going to take, I still feel very confident about, very, not confident, but strongly, that I don't like to take them above third grade unless they're a sibling to somebody that we accept because we really, as a school, want to keep it to be a family that grows with us through the years and is committed to the school, not just, you know, trying to find a spot for their kid because they might not be happy somewhere else. So, um, so I'm still pretty committed to that idea, but I just want to let you know that there's a lot of interest right now, more than we've had ever for school choice slots. And so that's all I have to say, and you, I already told you about how we were thinking about spending the money.
So, and so moving forward, it would be good, maybe, you know, to sort of keep that as a perpetual calendar item for you to think about, you know, maybe before the budget season, if there's opportunities to use that money in a productive way so that it can be, you know, presented during the same time that we're, you know, going through a budget. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I just have a few things, the bulk of the report, of course, was the mic drop from the commissioner and the Board of Education. Our Union Twenty Eight schools are in a variety of places, at least until April first. Irving remains pre-K to six in person, however, they are doing two weeks of remote after February vacation per school committee vote. Leverett, students are attending K to four, and Swift River will be returning in alternating cohorts on March first and March eighth by grade, until we may have to return altogether. Annie Foley Ruiz has been our interim principal in Leverett for this year and much to my pleasure and the pleasure of the rest of the leadership team and the staff at Leverett. She's going to remain the interim principal for one more year. I, I think in a year of lots of changes, it's nice to have a steadying force, and that's, that's our Annie. So she'll remain at Leverett. We are all in our new offices, and Bruce and Pam, thank you, organized with Adam Suzor and the Suzor I T, a new phone system. It's Ring Central, so there's an app on your cell phone, you can use your laptop as a phone. I don't know all the ins and outs, but it works wonderfully, so we're very happy to have that. And, you know, we're saving a little money once we get rid of our phone line at Swift River, for example, for the superintendent's office because of the Ring Central. And lastly, much to my sadness and chagrin, our director of Student Support Services job is posted up on School Spring. I'm sure you all know, from knowing me for six years, how closely Prue and I work together. And we're looking for someone not to replace her, but to step into the Director of Student Support Services position. We'll have a small screening and interview team with some leadership team members and a representation of student support teachers. But Prudy will be missed. And we look forward to finding someone to step into the position, but never to step into her shoes. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. All right, Bruce, Director of Finance and Operations.
So just to add a little bit to Jen's conversation about the phone. We now have it attached to the three, 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 seven number. So we're back to where U Twenty Eight was prior to our move. So if you dial the three, 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 seven number, it actually, we can switch to extensions, no matter where we are in the, in the area, whether we're working remotely or in our office. So it's kind of a cool thing. Couple of fun things I got going on, I've been a head up fellow that's working in the Swift River School on the H V A system, the C system, look at On the HVA system, the C system, look at, um, the Suits Berry system, uh, the current system is an air actuated system. And we'd like to move it to electronic system. So, um, I'm working, he's working up a quote for us so we can, um, look and see where we're going to go with that. The other thing is, uh, I've had somebody look at the windows and that's why I, um, think we can do them. But, uh, having I got a price from Greenfield Glass to do a storefront window. Uh, it's about $16,000 apiece. So, but that's a aluminum frame window. It's a one and done. That's why we're looking at substantial amount of money, but I think it'll be.
And these are the sliding doors, by the way, everybody.
And that's, um, I'd like to do both of them. We've looked at both of them and they're both in, um, some disrepair. It's not disrepair. It's just they're aging and, um, beginning to rot, especially at the bottom. A couple of other things, we talked about grants. Uh, we did get some additional grant money in the last month. The state came up with, uh, about $6,300 for state coronavirus. Prevention Fund Program, they call it. And it sounds like, uh, now that we're moving to, um, in-person learning, then we'll probably use most of that just to, buy, uh, services to make it so we can eat outside and things like that. So, uh, the other one, uh, we got what they call Esser 2. It's a two-year, it goes to the end of 2023. $10,000 allotted for social emotional, um, wellbeing for the next couple of years. And Suits Berry got $85,841. But as Jackie spoke, we're probably going to need some people to, uh, help with, um, catch up and moving ahead with students that didn't function well with remote learning. So things going on, uh, we got, uh, two application deadlines for the Esser 2. If we want to use some this year, we can apply next month. If we don't, we, oh, we have until July to apply. So that's basically what I've got. Thank you.
All right, Bruce, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Principals report.
I've already talked a lot. The only other things, I have one important thing to add and I, and my, the guardian angel of my year is, is on with us right now. And, and the angel's name is Debbie Lee. And, um, and, uh, she's just going to talk really quickly about something that we have in the works that we are going to go move forward with. Cause we have the money in our budget. Uh, but I did want to let you know about it because it, it impacts the teach, the learning at the school. Um, and that is our, uh, we are going to move forward with an outside wifi support for the school. Not only is this going to help obviously in COVID times now and in the fall, because most likely the students won't be vaccinated yet in the fall. That we would be able to have full access outside, uh, so students could work in cohorts outside using wifi. And if we have students at home, the teachers are able to remember, because they have to teach both in-person and at-home students at the same time. They would also be able to be outside and still be able to accomplish that task with outside wifi. Obviously the town also, you know, I, I'm envisioning perhaps always having town meeting outside with wifi access. I don't know, but also, um, in general, just moving forward, you know, Debbie Lee and I are actually really excited about having this option and how that could really open up some of our educational opportunities that we have at the school. To even have some outside learning classrooms for a significant portion of the year would be really interesting. So, um, she's going to, she put together a few slides that she is going to just show you about, um, about what we're thinking. And, um, thank you Debbie for staying on so long. And this won't be a very long thing, but I did want everybody to, um, kind of see what we're thinking.
So Jackie, are you okay to share? My intent is really.
Can I share?
I can, I can make you share.
Okay. I think I can share.
Okay. Let me, one second Jackie, I just have to add it, make you a co-host.
Oh, okay. I am now a co-host.
Yeah. So you should be able to share.
Okay. Hold on. Let me just click back on here. Share my screen. Oh, I can share my Google Chrome slide. Okay. Can you see it?
Yes.
Can you see the sidebar with me in it or no?
Yes.
Okay. Let me minimize that. Okay.
So, uh, my intent is not, um, to bore you first of all, uh, but I just wanted to provide an overview of the thinking, what we have now and what some of the ideas are going forward. So what you're looking at is a, um, an image of what our internal wifi looks like. As you can see, every single classroom or mostly every single classroom has a wifi AP, which stands for airport. And so that's how we're covering the entire building. On the next slide, you'll see that that internal wifi bleeds out a little bit and it overflows just to outside the classroom windows, which is great. But it's truly not going to be sufficient to support outdoor learning. If we're looking at possibly bringing everyone back in five days a week. So, um, what I started doing was, uh, evaluating, just having conversations and exploring possible, um, methods of implementing. And so what I'd like to do is show you just two, uh, two or three possibilities and just talk through them. So then on the next slide, option one, this is a model that actually, um, Irving has already implemented. What you're looking at here is, um, the yellow dot represents an external airport. And so the kind of work that has to go into making this, enabling this actually, is you'll see that little S on the top of the roof. That's just to mark where our server room is. So wiring has to go from the server room to that external port that would be mounted on the building. This is not to scale. This is just me mocking it up so that I could just show you something to help you, you know, understand what I'm talking about. So if this were mounted, as you see here, it would provide wifi to, um, maybe just before the, um, play structure. Okay. So that's just an example of what we might do as one part of an, as an implementation. On the next slide, I actually had a conversation with, um, engineers, wifi engineers, just to get a sense of what other, um, possibilities there might be to really provide full, um, comprehensive coverage. And so what you're looking at this, uh, looking at in this model here is what's called a point-to-point. So again, we have wiring that goes from the server room and we have that external AP, the yellow one. And it's actually beaming to another device that would be mounted on a light post, um, right along that tree line. And the reason why that would, we would build it that way is because then the blue circle represents a broader, wider access. So that it covers more of the field. And as you can see, it's, it's just, it's a, um, a bigger area of coverage. And then of course, we still have some access or overflow from the internal to the app, to, uh, to the outside of the classroom. The, on the last slide, this is another model that I was just thinking about, um, after I was looking at the other two. And I was thinking about the teachers and I was thinking about how we really don't know, um, what outside learning would look like. In fact, I, I think Jackie and Jen, we would, you know, we make our best plans. But things inevitably change. It's, it's been, it's been a moving target and, but we, um, you know, we're always coming up with different options. And so what this represents here is the possibility that, um, teachers may not really expect to be at the lower field. But maybe what they're doing is thinking that based on instructional needs, they would prefer to have direct, um, wifi access closer to their, their classrooms. So this is another way of establishing wifi, having a multiple ports, uh, wrapped around the outside. So you can see that really the cost of implementing this is twofold. It's wiring and, uh, and then it's the devices itself. As I was reflecting on this, I, and this is just a recommendation. And actually, as I was listening to this meeting, I realized, oh, this timeline isn't going to work out necessarily. Especially, especially if we're looking at, you know, in April, everyone's in. But I just wanted to share an idea and the idea is that maybe we think about phasing it in. Maybe we think about first, starting with one external AP. Evaluate its effectiveness, um, really validate, you know, that we're getting the coverage that we expect. And then, um, between that and also gathering teacher input and, and really understanding what the expectations are in terms of what they're thinking. Outdoor learning would look like, then choose option two or three. So I think really what I wanted to share is that basically it's a phased approach. And, and actually the other thing is that it's not an exact science. In other words, what your coverage is influenced by many factors. There are environmental factors, for example, trees that get in the way, uh, weather gets in the way. Uh, just how many devices are on one AP, one airport. So I think why I was thinking that a phased approach might maybe a cost-effective, accurate approach is that we can actually implement one and evaluate how it's working. And then with teacher's input, really decide which is the proper design. Well, that's it. Are there any questions?
Well, I was going to say, thank you for thinking outside the box, but maybe I should say thinking outside the building.
I know. It's actually, it's obvious, it's a necessity to have obviously during COVID times, but non-COVID times, it's a really exciting prospect to think about. And, um, I, I think I, as you can, just even in the, you all know Debbie Lee, but even just listening to that presentation, you know, why she's the guardian angel of my life this year. And for our school, but, um, but yeah, so I mean, that, we just wanted you to have an idea of what's going on there. It's going to be significant dollars spent. And so it's important for you to understand that, but also it's going to impact our, our learning and our teaching and our experiences of our students. And I think a positive way. So it's another reason why we wanted you to kind of have a bigger overview of what is happening there. Yes, Lauren.
I just wanted to say that I really think it's smart to do, to try, to try something and see, um, what the needs are, because I think probably the teachers don't really even know what, what they need yet. Or, and, and you know, as you learn how to, how you want to set up your outdoor classrooms and, um, and all of that, that, that will impact it too. So I just want to say, I think that's a really smart way to go about it.
I would agree.
Great.
Any other comments? Well, thank, oh, sorry Becky.
I'm sorry, um, Debbie, Debbie Lee, I, I was just curious if, if you had touched base at all with anybody on the MLP, uh, for any assistance on thinking, uh, of other ways to do this.
Uh, no, I, I haven't. Um, cause I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Um, the, the members of the broadband committee, uh, when we did the outdoor, uh, annual town meeting, uh, they jumped in. We didn't, uh, we have, uh, and a guest, uh, router, router, ONT that's available to people, a guest router. At the town hall that people can sit in the parking lot and use. But, um, for annual town meeting, we knew we would have, you know, maybe a couple of hundred people in the field. They jumped in and mounted, um, ONTs on the hut that is behind the town hall. And we're, you know, almost everyone at the annual town meeting was able to have wifi service during the meeting. So I, I know they solved that problem for us and you know, it wasn't, you know, it was temporary. They took it down at the end of the day, but, um, they might have a different solution, you know, a different approach to the, to the problem. That might be useful, uh, for you to look at.
Becky, would you recommend maybe she contact Gail Huntress?
Yep.
So Debbie, Gail Huntress, wonderful person, smart.
She's met with her before.
I don't have to say anymore. You, you'll be two peas in a pod.
Thank you Becky. That's a, that's a great suggestion. I can talk to her.
Great.
Great.
And then one very, very final thing is a happy thing is that, um, our fifth grade teacher took it upon herself to apply for a Staris Grant for an artist in residence. Um, and we received it and it's going to be, um, an outdoor improv teacher. That comes and we are thinking about having a traveling, uh, outdoor performance, which means the kids would be outside. And then what happens is the kids remain in a spot and the very limited audience would travel. It's a traveling theater would travel to each scene of kids. We don't know exactly what it's going to look like, but it will be completely outside and, um, obviously following guidelines, but our fifth grade teacher, Laura Ginsburg Pelts, uh, applied for it, contacted the artist and did it all. On top of everything else, and we really appreciate that because it's something special for everyone to look forward to.
Great. That sounds cool. All right. Well, anything else Jackie? All right, Debbie, thank you for sharing all that information. We really appreciate it. All right, let's move on to Amherst Home Representatives report. Steven is not here to report, but is there anyone else that knows anything? In Amherst.
The only thing, um, that I, I do know, um, Amherst of course is considering altering the start time. Of the secondary students, which is impactful to the elementary students, both in the region and Leverett and Suits Berry. Dr. Morris has reached out to Union 28, which is wonderful. And Jackie, Annie, Bruce and I have met with him, um, and I believe he's presenting information, um, next Tuesday. He surveyed parents both in the region and in, um, Leverett and Suits Berry, and I think they'll be voting on it.
And I think that data was a hundred people from Suits Berry responded and 80% were in favor of the change.
Yes. Thanks.
From Suits Berry.
Great. Well, thank you for sharing that. All right, uh, Union 28, I don't think we have anything, do we? No. And the only thing I have to report at the collaborative, we haven't had a meeting, but we continue on the executive director, uh, search. Screening committees are currently going through, I think there were like 80 something applicants. That was narrowed down from, I think it was 82 or 84, uh, to a little bit more of a manageable group. And that was just based on whether, you know, making sure that people met the criteria. They didn't meet the criteria, they weren't put to the screening committee. All right. Now the really fun part, um, policy review. Uh, the first three, um, policies, DA, DJ and DJ, DJA are all first readings. So, uh, I'm hoping that all school committee members read through them. If there's anything that you'd like to add on any of them, you want to let us know now, we can start with DA. Any changes to that policy? DJ? DJA? Okay. I don't think I had anything on either of, any of those either. All right. So obviously this is the first reading. So if there is anything, you can bring it back the next time when we have the first vote or the second reading. So we also have second readings and first votes on five policies. Lauren, do you want to motion each one? And, uh, Jen, you can second and we'll just keep it e- easy that way so that it'll be easier to keep records. Lauren, do you want to make the first motion?
Yeah, um, I move to approve, um, BDH public comment at school committee meetings.
A second.
Excellent. And that's something that's already pretty much on our, uh, the other half of our agendas and stuff. Um, any changes? Okay, all in favor? All right, okay, passes unanimously. Uh, next.
I moved to approve I H B E A, English learner education.
Okay, that was the second, any changes, amendments? Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
All right.
I moved to approve, um, policy J B, equal educational opportunities.
Okay. Jen, you're seconded, right?
Yeah, I seconded.
Sorry, thank you. All right, any changes or amendments? Okay, all in favor? All right. All right.
I moved, I moved to approve policy, um, J B B, educational equity.
Second.
Okay. Any changes, amendments? No, all in favor? All right. Okay, passes unanimously.
And I moved to approve policy C H C A, approval of handbooks and directives.
A second.
Okay, any amendments or changes? All in favor? All right, okay, passes unanimously. And that is it for policies. All right, we see some items for future business, you can see those there, uh, policy committee meeting, uh, next school committee meeting date, uh, Union 28 Joint Supervisor Committee date. And that is it for that, uh, next. We need to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collect the bargaining or litigation. Uh, and we will be coming back into open public session to adjourn and possibly vote. Or I should say vote and possibly adjourn, or possibly vote and adjourn. We're definitely gonna adjourn.
Um, Becky, is it possible on here to, um, allow chat so I can put the meeting in the chat? Or is that not possible?
I'm afraid it's not possible at this point.
Okay.
We discontinued the chat because we couldn't manage it.
Okay, does everybody have the invite that needs the invite?
No, I don't.
Okay.
It's a Google, it's a Google Meet, right?
Yep. Let me-
So send it to, and we are gonna invite Becky to join us and the school committee as well as, uh, administration.
Can you send it again, Jen? I don't know if I have it or not.
Yeah, send it to all of us if you don't mind.
Yep, I'm sending it right now.
We will be back into open public meeting, but, uh, Trevor, if you want to sign off.
And we, do we need Jackie? Are you asking Jackie to attend as well?
Yeah, Jackie's going to attend, uh, executive session and then we'll come back into open public session. So you don't need to come back or you don't need to wait for us, Trevor.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Jen, can you send me an invite too?
Yeah, I'm, um-
And Susie, thank you for attending our meeting tonight.
Okay, everybody should have it. Um, do people want to confirm before I hop over?
Have it.
I have it.
Did, you sent it to the-
I have it.
All right, I have it.
Yep, it's- Well, what, Lauren?
I have it in my personal account, I don't know.
But that's funny, it says Thomas Saquen L, Chootsberry School.org.
Yeah. Weird.
So you need to conduct a vote to move it to executive-
Right, thank you Trevor, so, uh, I made the motion.
A second.
Okay, um, we'll roll call vote out, hazai.
Brown eye.
Thomas, bye.
Katie already left.
Okay, well, we have enough anyhow. All right, thank you all.
The rest would be stuck here forever.
Stuck here forever. All right, good night, we'll see you in the other, uh, room.
Okay. Thanks.
Bye.
Thank you Trevor.
Is it very squeaky for others? Your face was, yeah.
Yeah, people have to mute.
Okay, uh, do we have everybody here? I think we do.
Bruce is, there's Bruce.
So the first thing I think- discuss is the, um, memorandum of agreement, is that right? Okay. Um, just for curiosity, did you all get that, uh, piece of information from Merrick O'Connell on public education law? Again, this is something that I had signed up for years ago at a, um, conference, but, uh, basically it's giving alerts on things. And this was a case, I think, with the Melrose School Committee, anyone familiar with all that? So it's in regards to memorandums of understanding, uh, memorandums of agreement and, uh, sort of where they stand when school districts want to do their learning models. So the Department of Labor Relations held with a decision of what type of educational models, in-person, hybrid or full remote is a matter of educational policy and therefore reserved exclusively to the district. As a result, regardless of what a school committee may have negotiated in a memorandum of agreement, the agreement is not enforceable to the extent it restricts the school district's ability to choose and change its educational model. So again, I just thought that was a pretty important piece of information, especially for, um, places like Amherst.
Well, and I think it'll be pertinent when we have to switch to all in person, right? This will, even though it says through the end of the year, it won't be applicable if we have to go back.
Right. So, um, I, I'm gonna start just because I know I might have to mute because of how this all works. But, uh, I, I read through the memorandum of, of agreement, um, and suppose, I'd like to go through sort of page by page, if anyone has a concern, um, or thought or idea, uh, or, or is there, and, and maybe before I start that, is there anything that anyone has a concern of right away about anything or? All right, let's go by page by page. I had a thought on page one. Right near the bottom, it says the district will provide face shields, smocks, masks, and it goes on. Will we provide face shields?
We have, we already purchased them.
Okay.
Yeah, there's one face shield for every, for every, no one, yeah, no one actually uses them, but we have them.
Okay. Does anyone have any concerns about page one? Okay. Page two. Um, I noticed under E, social distancing requirements, further down, it's like the B, students will be required to maintain six feet of social distance. Now I know there's been that conversation about the three feet.
Yeah, we can do that, we have enough room to do that. It's not always ideal because like, for example, I'm gonna have to split up the sixth grade class into two classrooms because there's a lot of them. But we, we have the space to be able to do it. Um, yeah.
Could we add something to that, something such as students will be required to maintain six foot, uh, six feet of social distance? When, uh, uh, or i- if at all possible, or something like that. Because again, I'm thinking the kids are walking down the hallway, they might walk closer to each other. And then you say, oh, six feet apart, then they're not gonna be, but-
I mean, we do that all day, yeah, like we have to do those reminders all day now.
And the teachers were not having that. There was other language in there, when possible, as much as possible, they wanted it out.
They wanted it out.
And they understand that that responsibility is on them to, that that's a group that they're managing. Yet they strongly did not want any extra words in that sentence.
Okay. Uh, Lauren?
I think it, um, it's a different conversation in my mind when Jack, because Jackie says it's possible to do the six feet. If it wasn't possible to bring everyone back at six feet, then I think we would really need to push the, for the language, but if it's possible, I think that that just changes the conversation.
Okay, so we're all good with that?
And, uh, Jackie, that will remain true even if, uh, more students want to come back, like the six feet.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you measure it the way that they're, this, the state is being very specific now on what that actually means. And it's actually, it's, it's not, i- i- it's closer than what you think it is if you go by the state metrics. And if we follow the state metrics, it's like from, from, from chair to chair of a student, not include, like, not everything else in between.
Or from like head to head, head to head.
Head to head, yeah. So yes, we can do it. Like I said, it's not going to be ideal in some of our larger classes because we, we're gonna have to have overflow spots, but we can do it. Yeah.
Uh, anyone else? Hi Becky.
Hi. I'm gonna be here later than the police tonight.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, they were saying, they were teasing me, you better be gone by the time we leave.
Okay.
And I assured them that this school committee had the most efficient meetings of any of our major.
Oh, well, we were efficient, we just had a lot to cover.
Yeah, it was a very in, in, uh, dense meeting.
All right, so, um, I believe we were roll calling out when we left that last meeting. So we all understand that happened and now we are back into open public session. So do we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Chootsberry School Committee and the Chootsberry Elementary Educators and Chootsberry affiliated workers?
I moved to approve the M O A for seesaw.
I can second.
All right, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Hey.
Nice, okay. Again, it is an important vote, let's do a roll call, hazai.
By and or I? Alcon Brown eye.
Thomas, pick one eye.
Okay. So is there anything else that we need to discuss? All right, as Chair L say, this meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much.
Yeah, thanks everybody. So pretty soon if our meeting gets changed, right, we'll-
Tomorrow, hopefully Pam, Pam's on top of things, as soon as we let, uh, and, and I only say ask Jennifer, because I feel like, you know, we work, Jennifer works for us and everyone else works for Jennifer. So I usually ask Jennifer and then Jennifer forwards it to, or you can include Pam, but I don't feel comfortable asking Pam to do anything. It's really Jennifer that has to ask Pam, so that's my-
Yeah, and remember that Jen has like a million other committees, so hopefully she has the eleventh.
Right, so if she doesn't, then we can take Becky's option of moving the other date further out, but this will give us the first option. Okay?
Um, so Dan, are you, you're gonna ask Jen about moving the meeting and I'm gonna send these final, this final vote to, um, onto-
Trevor.
Oh, Trevor, okay, I don't think I have Trevor's email.
Uh, I'll, I'll email something to all of us.
Okay.
With Trevor and then, uh, so I'll email Jen and I'll C C Pam and, uh, I'll email you Trevor, okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care.
Bye.
Night.
Good night.